Hello, welcome. It's 5:01. My stomach hurts. Today, we're bringing this meeting back into order. It's the final budget hearing for September 26, 2023. And Erin and Mr. Howard, I'm going to throw this over to you.
I'm going to throw it right over to Erin. First of all, I want to say I want to compliment staff for all the hard work they've done, Erin, Barb, and all the department heads, constitutional officers working together because to get here tonight is monumental. I can tell you that. So I don't forget at the end on purpose, but thank you for their leadership of this office and everybody else. I want to congratulate staff.
Thank you.
So before we start the presentation, I just wanted to go over real quick some items that are already in the budget. We heard from commissioners and citizens. You know, the budget is large. It's a large document. But some of the things that are currently in there include renovating the Lakes Regional Library, Fort Island Beach Parking and replacement of pavilions. We're replacing the Fort Island Trail floating docks at the park and the beach. We have the Homasasa Area Recreation Park Soccer Field Lighting. Central Ridge is getting LED lighting. We're contributing to save Crystal River. We have replacement play structures budgeted for bicentennial and Bluebird. They've already started Fire Station Park and Tornado Park. And there's also funding for Haldiver Multi-Use Path and the Three Sisters to La Grange, if I said that correctly, I hope, Connector and resurfacing of the Hernando Beach Boat Ramp. So we do realize that sometimes those are buried down in the budget, but we do have those things in there that the citizens will be able to see as time goes on.
Thank you.
So this will be the final budget hearing for September 26, 2023. The purpose of the final budget hearing is for the Board of County Commissioners to amend the adopted tentative budget as it sees fit, adopt a resolution stating the millage rates to be levied, and adopt a final budget. So the next slide talks about millage rate and the change. This is required by TRIM, which is from the Florida Department of Revenue. So the change in millage over the rolled-back rate. The aggregate rolled-back rate is 7.5349 mils. The percentage of increase over the aggregate rolled-back rate is 17.79 percent, and the tentative aggregate millage rate is 8.8755 percent. So B will be take comments and questions from the general public concerning the tentative budget and proposed change in millage.
Thank you. If anyone would like to speak at this time regarding the general public's concern of the tentative budget, please step forward. You have three minutes to speak. Please fill out a green card, state your name and where you live. Direct all comments to the chairman, please.
Sabrina Watson, La Canto, Florida. I just want to point out, obviously for the people who are watching this, not necessarily the people in the room, because there aren't very many people in the room, I do want to talk about the sheriff's fraudulent budget. There are some successful businesspeople on this board who have written budgets in the past. A budget contains things like how many reams of paper you're going to buy, how much ink you're going to buy, how much expansion or change that you need to make with regard to your business and building and property. The interesting thing about the sheriff's fraudulent budget is that it indicates none of that. It doesn't say how many cars he's buying, how many hundred thousand dollar chargers he's buying, or who he's giving them to. It doesn't state anything about any helicopters that he's sold or where that income has gone. It doesn't state anything about any funds that he's collected from seizures or traffic tickets or anything else. None of that information is there. And none of the information is there with regard to where any of those funds will go. So there's nothing, like I said, about equipment that's been bought or sold. So, you know, I don't need a whole three minutes. I think the public needs to ask a simple question. How many cars, just, we're going to use cars as an example, how many cars, hundred thousand dollar cars or hundred thousand dollar boats does the sheriff intend to buy? And who will be driving those? And what will any member of this board receive in exchange for a vote to increase a fraudulent, non-transparent budget? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name is Mark Svesky. I live on North Wagon Point in Pine Ridge, and I'm here to represent the 11,000 residents of Pine Ridge. I have a letter on file, so I'm asking for five minutes. Madam Chair, you've probably heard this a bunch from other people before, but this is our first opportunity. It's really good to see you back. And we'd like to thank all the commissioners for the opportunity to talk to you tonight.
Could you say that again? She sneezed. I'm teasing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'd like to focus specifically on the funding for residential roads. Difficult for us to mine out some of the details, so a lot of this I'm going to address is based on the latest data we have from the staff, which has done a really good job helping us understand it. Specifically on the intersection between two documents, the annual budget and what you're going to see tonight on the update to the five-year capital improvement schedule. Broadly speaking, there are four ways to fund the budget, fund the resurfacing. SCOT money, you got gas taxes, you got your normal ad valorem stuff, and then on top of that, we kind of differentiate the two tenths of a mil per year special budget. We'll omit the MSBU, the Citrus Springs MSBU, because that's kind of a special case that applies only to them. Now, there's only one SCOT program for this year, or this proposed budget, and that's almost $780,000 for the North Duncan Field. Stacked on top of that is the gas tax money, which our understanding is $4 million in the last data that we had. And on top of that is the normal ad valorem money. Normally, year to year to year to year, including this current year, it's a million dollars. We can't find that in the budget. So what used to be there doesn't appear to be there. And then on top of that is the two tenths of a mil special tax, which should be just shy of $5.2 million based on, and that doesn't include the 5% withhold for TRIM compliance on that. That total stack is just shy of $10 million, not including that 5% withhold. It's hard for us to determine those numbers based on what's in the agenda packet. We're relying on the data that we got from the staff. But with all the pressure on the millage, cutting the millage and cutting the budget, we are concerned that some of the money that was normally proposed for resurfacing may be diverted or outright cut from the budget. I'd like to bring your attention to page 902 and 903 from the agenda packet for the BOCC meeting. I hope that you have it in your meeting books there. It should be table 12-1, the five-year capital improvement schedule. Under transportation, the first line is the annual road resurfacing program. The fifth line is the North Duncan Field SCOT project. And then if we look over at the fiscal year 23, $24 column, you see the different numbers there. We can easily find the SCOT money in there, so we can confirm that in there. But our concern is in that first line, that $8 million, the annual road resurfacing program, only $8 million in that. So that gives us a little bit of concern because it doesn't agree with our understanding of the budget. It should be somewhere around $9.171 million based on what I just kind of stepped through on what our understanding of the budget was. Again, our concern is that money is being diverted. That million dollars that we talked about is going somewhere, and then the $8 million listed there versus 9.171 and $610 on top of that. So, specific request for the chair, or in response to your public comments, we ask that the chair answer or correct our numbers, or ask the staff to correct our numbers on that lineup that I gave for the actual understanding of our budget. Second, we'd like to confirm the board's commitment to take that, the remnants of that 5% withhold and direct it towards the road resurfacing money that'll actually go to road resurfacing. Third is the normal $1 million that is in the normal 1 million ad valorem taxes that are normally dedicated that we can't find in the budget. In honesty, it's probably too late to adjust this year's budget on this late note for that $1 million. But if it is not in there, and if it is not in there, we ask that it be restored in the following year's fiscal budget. Thank you for what you do. We know it's not an easy job, particularly with hard budget decisions that have to be made, and we appreciate your willingness to face these problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Frank Papson from Arrowhead. I looked at the budget. There's a whole bunch of numbers. The numbers I was looking for was, what was last year's budget and what's this year's budget? How much money came in last year, and how much money is going to come in this year? My appraised value on my property went up, and if the mill rate remained exactly the same, my taxes will still be going up. I'm hearing people saying, we want to increase the millage, and other people saying, no, we don't want to increase it. I was under the understanding, and I could be very wrong, that 1 mil, I think it is 1 mil, equaled $4 million. That was based on numbers that are, in my mind, pretty old. Because as property value increases, when you turn around and tax the total dollar amount, that rate is going to increase. So in other words, instead of being 4 million, it may be 5 million, it may be 6 million, but I can't find that information at all in the budget. And what I'm asking for is for dumb people like me to make things simple, put a comparison of last year's budget, this year's budget, last year's income compared to this year's income. Because right now, I don't know what you have projected to be income, but I know that the income that you're going to get doing nothing is going to increase. And I'm looking for, you know, I don't know how much of an increase, I don't know how much more you're spending. I'll give that to other people. Anyways, just like to get some more information, a little bit easier for me to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin, what page is that on?
That's what I'm trying to find in the backup.
Next speaker, please.
Janet Barr from Citrus Springs. Well, the property taxes went up again. I really don't feel that I am personally getting the best for my dollars. Okay, the thing that should be in that budget are the needs, and the needs should be there. The wants need to be set aside for now. Inflation has gone up so high. COLA doesn't even touch inflation. Before my COLA is given to me in January, or any other person gets their COLA raise from the government for our Social Security, Medicare, and everything else, it's gone. So the thing is, you're asking residents like me to fork out an additional, say, $200 to $400. We haven't done anything to our house, but the appraisal went up, so my property tax went up. I keep asking about roads. Well, I understand what the gentleman was talking about, because $8 million is what you had talked about per year, and then you were going to increase it in the SIP. SCOT money, it's a good thing you don't turn that down. That is the best investment in this county, because that's what keeps the main connector collectors moving. The fact that he couldn't find some of the money, I know that they don't put it in the budget, but part of that money goes to line striping, which is not cheap, traffic light bulbs, which are not cheap, and all the different signs that have to be put up or replaced. I don't know if it's a million dollars' worth, but I do know that that's not considered road resurfacing, but it is part of transportation. And I understand that because I've been coming to these meetings for a long time. If you're new to coming to these meetings, or new to looking at the budgets, the one this year is similar to what I've seen in the past, and I didn't print out the whole thing this year for a change. Normally, I do, but I got lazy this year. I can't afford to pay for the paper and for the toner. So what I'm asking is that you carefully go through tonight before you approve it. Get rid of all the wants. I want this, I want that, I want the other. This is not the year for wants. This is the year you need to be saying, these are the essential needs of the residents of Citrus County that need to be met so that we can operate. I mean, we've got to give the pay raises, which is fine. Give them a pay raise, and guess what? The groceries went up. I don't go into the grocery store unless I spend 50 bucks now, and that's a minimum. I don't go to the gas station unless I spend $40 now, and that's a minimum. I mean, it's got to a point where I try not to go to the grocery store or get gas. You know, and that's my life, you know, my life, and I know so many other people that are worse off than I am. And I don't make that much on Social Security. Like I said, COLA is not going to go up 12%. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next speaker, please.
Janice Christie from Floral City. Good evening, board members and citizens. I agree with the citizens that came before me. As a citizen of Citrus County from Floral City, I oppose the increasing of the current millage at this time, for it places undue hardship on the citizens of Citrus County. I do propose delaying the millage increase for one fiscal year, notifying the citizens of its date and rate of increase, allowing them the time needed to prepare for the additional expense. And this also would enable the citizens of Citrus County to, the opportunity to safeguard their homes in the process. I know that the clerk of Citrus County prides itself in its written values of communication and service of excellence, and I pray that you would take our recommendations and consider them. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tracy Edgeman, Hernando, Florida. Well, like everybody else, this isn't the year to be raising taxes. You guys took a boost in your expenses for traveling and education and stuff this year, which actually comes out of your budget. You've added some additional things, and we have a lot of growth going on, which is great. I mean, we all like to see growth and everything, but may I ask who's going to be able to afford going to those businesses that are being built right now if we have to continue? Things are not going to get cheaper. Next year, just because it's an election year, we're not going to see the decreases, which is normal, of the game of politics. It's not going to happen. Things are just going to continue to go up. And to charge us for these things, plus we're looking at, you want to do something with an animal shelter, which we all want the animals taken care of, but can we afford what you're asking for? You keep asking the people to pay more and more and more and more, and we can't do it, especially those that are living on the Social Security and depend on that, and may have a minimal retirement fund or pension fund to supplement that, and they may not even have one. So we're going to lose our homes. Is that really what our government here in Citrus County want to start seeing, is people's foreclosure rates go up? And in times like this, you can put a moratorium on your tax increases, especially for the property taxes. This is happening all over the country. It's a land grab, if you really want to know the truth. Tax them out of their homes, you've got the big developers and the big relatives and the big bucks coming in and taking the property. People sell it. This has been going on for the last three or four years. And they're here, we know they're here, we know who they're working for. So it's a game, it needs to come to an end, and you guys can hold the taxes this year. And I do, like everyone else, hope that you will listen to our recommendations. Not just our recommendations, but it's the wisdom of the people, okay? And you do work for the people. We hired you, and we're asking you to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Anyone like to speak? Going once, going twice. Okay, I'm going to close the, open to the public. Do we have anything in the budget for the new animal shelter?
It's just what's been donated.
Yeah, it's just what's been donated. And we actually did not increase on the travel. I just want to put that in there. Okay, those are the only two questions I could remember. Go ahead, Erin.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry, I don't remember their last names, but I know Mr. Frank had asked about the budget this year as compared to next year's. So the first budget summary is in the budget book on page six, and then every department in the budget book shows this year's budget compared to next year's budget. If there's one you'd like in particular, just give us a call, and we can get that for you. Mark, we had met with him and got him some information, and so those pages he's looking at are actually the CEI, or what is produced from the CIP. So what's in there for road resurfacing is $8 million, because when we do the CIP in April, we knew that we were going to add two mils. So every year, we just have it in the CIP that it's going up $2 million. However, every year, that mil changes. So this year, instead of it being eight mils, it's actually like nine and a half million dollars. So it's not missing money. The CIP is an estimate of where we're going to be. If you look in the budget, the actual funding is in the budget. So we don't go back and change the CIP and say, now it's $9 million. If something else were to change for next year, we may change next year's number to align that. But what we knew is you all had planned on adding two tenths of a mil every year.
Erin, so the 9.17 mil, million, where is that in the budget? Is that hard to find?
Yeah, well...
Are you, I was going to wait to address those two questions.
We will look for that page to show them. What I will say is there are $2 million activities that happened within road resurfacing. One is we carried forward a million dollars. So obviously, once that's used, it will not be carried forward again. The second thing is, at one point, and I'm not sure what year it was, a million dollars was used from Duke funding to put towards road resurfacing. So it did show up as general fund money. Since that time, the board has changed how they fund the road resurfacing. So that was a one-time deal where a million came out of the general fund. And then there, and I'm sorry, I missed this name as well. One of the citizens had asked about advertising. The state of Florida requires us to advertise these meetings, as well as all of your meetings. So they are all advertised.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Erin, I think Mr. Papson wanted to know our current dollar amount per mil, like 1 mil equals. Could you give him that exact amount?
We have it on a slide. And here, like one or two, it's on a slide. So we'll go over it with you. So if we're done with public comment, we'll move on, and we'll get to that slide for him. So the next slide is going to be budget direction. So this is where some commissioners had asked for certain issues to be brought back, one of those being the implementation of the pay-in-class study with a starting rate of 1450 per hour. So if that is a consensus of the board, we would need to know that now.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I don't think we can afford it.
Okay.
The pay-in-class study suggested, I believe, at a minimum, raising to $13 an hour, and I think that's what we can afford to do. It would be nice to get everyone to 1450 or $15 an hour, and we will as soon as we can afford it. But jumping there this year, we can't do it. That is, that's too big of a bite this year, in a year when we're trying to reduce the increase in the amount of millage. We're not going to be able to decrease the millage, but at least decrease the hike in the millage rate. So that's my position, is that we need to be at $13 an hour.
This is a no. I'm a yes. I think that it's very, I think it is irresponsible for me to ask employees to live on $22,000 a year, and we have so many other increases in different budgets. So Mike, I am a yes for the 1450. Looking for consensus? Commissioner Baze?
I'm 100% in agreement with getting the pay-in class up to the 1450 for various reasons. It's been told to me by staff that if we don't do this, it's going to put us woefully behind for three years. You can probably better explain that. I just, it makes no sense. I've been on this board back in 2010 when we laid off, I don't know, 250 employees. And over the years, the Board of County Commissioners has failed to be responsible to its employees, and I think, and I'm not trying to point anybody out, but I think every other constitutional officer has pretty much got their employees up to this rate. The minimum wage of $15 an hour went before the citizens, and they voted on it. They voted yes, and it has to be put in place by, I believe, 2016. And I think, you know, a lot of these people are the men and women on the other end of a shovel. They work in extreme weather conditions, and that is just some, one point that I, and I can't tell you the number of employees that I've ran into, whether it's in church, in the grocery store, on the sidewalk, and they've all said, please, 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 please. And I think if, you know, before we cut these people, then we have to start looking at giving up a sidewalk, or we have to give up a boat, whatever it is. But I think to not take action for our employees and the roads is just fundamentally wrong.
Commissioner Finnegan?
While I do agree we need to take care of our staff, and I think we are, I agree with Commissioner Cannard. I had the same conversation with staff and asked about, we are going to get to the 15, and although today, I would love to pay them $15 an hour or $20 an hour starting, we can't afford that. And I think roads are going to come up later, Mark, and, you know, I have some ideas of, the amount isn't what you think it is for this year, and I think maybe we can fully fund where we're supposed to be for roads and get the millage down. It's just going to take some tweaking. But I want to remind everybody, if we do, as Commissioner Cannard suggests, the $13 an hour, we are still taking care of all current staff. There was a pay-in-class study done, and if someone should be raised up to a certain amount because we are woefully behind in paying that position, they're going to get that amount. If they're currently making minimum wage, they're going to get a raise to the $13 an hour. We are going to take care of every current staff position, if we go with Commissioner Cannard's recommendation and mine also. The people it will affect would be the new hires. Next year, obviously, by law, it will go up again because the voter said $15 an hour, knowing that it would go up $1 a year so we could all get there. So I think by voting the $13 per hour, we're fixing all the problems with our staff. We're still going to work on this. We can't fix everything this year. And we're still taking into account our taxpayers. We're alleviating some of that burden, fixing our staff. We're trying to look for a balance here. The taxpayers can't take the whole bite out of everything in one year. They just can't do it, and I agree we can't afford it. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
I am in favor of it. I cannot improve upon what my colleague Commissioner Baze said from a human standpoint, so I'm going to address the competitive set. We have Target moving in, we have all these other folks, you know, companies that are going to be offering $15 an hour jobs. Marion County... Marion County is already at fifteen, they're considering going to sixteen dollars an hour for their staff. We cannot compete for workers. So, if you want the grass mowed, the DRAs cleaned, all of those really, you know, super hard jobs where there's a shovel involved, as Commissioner Bays said, we have to be competitive. So, I'm in favor of it.
Excuse me, I'm first and then I'll come to you. I haven't spoken, I, I wanna say that we have thirty employees under twelve dollars an hour. They are not gonna be at thirteen dollars an hour. We have twenty-three under thirteen, twenty-three under fourteen, and seventy-eight under fourteen fifty. That's a hundred and fifty-four employees that I just believe deserve to have this before there are boats or cars or any other increases in different, every single constitutional officer pays their employees properly. And to say that you don't wanna get them to fourteen fifty is, to me, I don't agree with it. But it sounds like we have three commissioners that are in agreement of fourteen fifty.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
You're comparing apples to oranges. And first of all, I'm gonna correct you and say, I don't, I don't want, it's, I never said I don't wanna get them to fourteen fifty. I said, we can't afford it. Because to get, to get these folks to fourteen fifty ahead of schedule, ahead of where we sit, what was planned, you have to take it from other people in the community and give it. It's not like private industry where we can say, alright, we didn't make any more money this year, but we're gonna take a little bit of our profit and give it to the employees. We have to take it from one group and give it to another group. That's what this is. That's a part of, of running government and using the public's checkbook to pay other people. It's, when I say it's comparing apples to oranges, you can't, you can't compare one-time purchases. A sidewalk that is used, that different funds are used for, or boats, or cars, or things like, those are one-time purchases. Once you put this into place, that fourteen fifty, now you're bumping up others who are currently at fourteen fifty. And when you bump them up, now you're bumping up the ones that were at fifteen fifty. And it does, it's not just a one-year thing. Now, you've already accelerated that, that pay increase schedule for next year and the year after and the year after. You know, the federal minimum wage, I just learned today, is at like eight dollars an hour. Yeah, the, the Florida voters approved fifteen dollars an hour. But most of them envision that we're gonna get, we're gonna get private industry for this. We're gonna get, we're gonna take some of that bottom line, some of that profit money and pay the employees the way it should be. I, I, I would almost guarantee you that a very small percentage of people thought, I'm gonna improve this. It's gonna, it's gonna increase my taxes. And I'm gonna end up giving up most of it back in taxes, but I'll feel good because I'm making fourteen fifty an hour. You know, I, I see that we've, you know, we've got a majority, but I just wanted to clear that up. That to pay these people fourteen fifty, we're gonna have to take it from other people to give it to them. That's what we're doing.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I just want Erin to clarify something. Because I asked this question and you said all a hundred-and-something current employees that aren't making thirteen, they're not gonna get there, but they will get there, they will. All of our current employees will move up, they'll all get a raise. Correct, Erin? We talked about this yesterday.
Right, so, the bottom pay for an employee at the thirteen-dollar pay plan would be, anyone that's here would go up to the thirteen dollars as the bare, like, bare minimum. So, as far as getting to the fifteen dollars per hour, though, what happens is you, the board will have to do a four percent across the board for the next three years to get there. So, we will, as a county, be having to budget that no matter what so that we can make it there, but when the law requires it. So, this year, the, you know, the thirteen would be what it starts at. And then year to year through 2026, we would have to do the four percent across the board minimum.
Thank you. So, to, to your point, Commissioner, all of those hundred-and-something people will get a raise this year and then next year and continually as they'll go up.
Those thirty that are at eleven dollars an hour, you're saying they're gonna be at thirteen this year?
They will go up to thirteen. So, what the difference is going to be with the pay-in-class is that some of those individuals, it is a hybrid method that Evergreen presented. So, it takes into account the position they're in and the years that they've been with the county and been in that position. So, when we look at it, yes, they will go up to thirteen. But some people, depending on how long they've been here, may, if they're already above thirteen, because there are quite a few positions that are, they may not get anything through pay-in-class. They may get fifty dollars, they may get seventy-five dollars. So, it's, it's bringing that bottom up, but it doesn't mean that everyone is, is going to get a large raise. Because what pay-in-class is doing is exactly what you all have mentioned. It is fixing all of the individuals that have been with the county during the time when there were not raises or maybe that position is now paid higher out in private. And so, it has to be adjusted so that we can keep an employee.
So, all thirty of these, this section will be at thirteen, all thirty?
Yes, they, everyone will go up to thirty. But
I stand corrected.
For getting those ones, there could be others that get nothing. It's not a guarantee, which is why we have the four percent across the board budget.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Now, would they go up to thirty, or go up to thirty? Would they go up to thirteen plus the COLA?
Yes, so, the pay-in-class will go into effect. And those at the, that are less than thirteen will go up to thirteen. But like I said, there are, there are quite a few that won't get anything. So, then the across-the-board comes into play and is applied. And it will have to be that way for the next three years to get that bottom thirteen up to fifteen.
Okay, alright.
And thirteen dollars a year is how much? Thirteen dollars an hour is how much a year? Twenty-seven, twenty-seven thousand, okay. Commissioner Finnegan.
You know, part, part of my rationale for this too, and I had mentioned it, was when you look at the, there was a, a page that Erin printed out for me, trying to cut the budget down. If we can, and it's my understanding, we may need about three million dollars to fully get our roads where we're supposed to be for this year instead of getting behind again. I mean, we have to cut something, but we could, if we go lower, we can still take a cut and then use some of that money and get us where we need to be in roads. Because the taxpayers, that's what they keep talking about, the roads. So, I wanna take care of our employees so far this year, but take care of all of these taxpayers. It's like, we have to pay more, we want our roads paved. And I feel like that's where we find that balance, that's where we do it.
Well, some of these thirteen dollars an hour are our taxpayers too.
I understand that they're gonna get raises. Or the eleven, you mentioned the eleven dollars or twelve dollars, they're all getting raised plus COLA.
Living at twenty-seven thousand is pretty hard and we end up replacing these people over and over. And I'm just, I think we need to rip the Band-Aid off and, but we have a consensus of three. So, we should just go on to the next.
So, next on that slide, you will see some information regarding what we call the Duke Fund. There are two bullets underneath there. One is for EMS stair chairs and stretchers. Chief Stevens came up a few meetings ago and explained how when that equipment was taken over from Nature Coast EMS, they had work done it themselves. Some of it's not usable, it's not repairable. And those are items they desperately need to transport safely. So, it would be a one-time replacement of the stair chairs and the stretchers for four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, which we could use Duke funding for, and there's two-point-six in reserves. So, it would not affect the budget or the millage.
And you need a consensus?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Kennard.
Yep, I like that.
Commissioner Bays.
Concur.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Finnegan? And I am a yes.
Okay. The next one talks about localized road repairs. There was a list of roads put together. I had emailed them out and I can go over them with you. These are roads that are not residential roads, but they're in need of some repair. There's East Norville Bryant Highway from North Forest Ridge heading east. West Dunkland Street, there are two locations.
Do you have that on a slide?
Um, I do not.
Okay.
North LeCanto Highway, northbound lanes from 486 to Mark Nighting Court and West Halls River Road, the area adjacent to Publix. The total, they came up with, it was nine-hundred-and-forty-thousand-one-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. We rounded it to nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Again, those would be one-time repairs. We could use Duke funding for that. And just so you all are aware, West Dunkland Street, that repair is seventy-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. That road is on SCOP five-year plan and it is in the project to be done or in the program to be done as a project in fiscal year 28. However, until then, that repair, they believe, still needs to be made for safety reasons.
And all of these roads, we get a lot of calls on from the public. I'd say probably seventy percent of our calls are related to some of these, these roads. I think this would be important to the citizens to fund this.
So, that money, that money would also come out of that Duke Special Projects Fund? So, that's not gonna affect the millage rate?
It will not, no.
And you need a consensus on this?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Kennard.
Yes.
Commissioner Bays? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Yes.
Commissioner Slayboss, yes.
Okay. The next one just occurred on Friday, so it did not make it into the presentation. We had a discussion with Public Works and Technical Services regarding road resurfacing. There was a presentation made to the board and they were asked to project a certain way for road resurfacing. When we got right down to it, they said to get on a twenty-year cycle, in today's dollars, it would be thirteen million dollars. So, we could start on the twenty-year cycle with thirteen million dollars this year. Obviously, every year, that cost would increase as in relation, cost of materials, all of that goes up. They did it over twenty years with compounding interest. And so, it came out to about twenty million dollars a year. However, then if you looked at year twenty-one, it would go up to like fifty-nine million dollars. So, in today's dollars, it's thirteen million if we wanted to begin a twenty-year cycle for replacing roads. So, I know, we had discussed this with commissioners. And so, to do that, we do have some millage that we had emailed out. We would have to use some of that savings to cover, to get to the three million dollars.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would oppose that. We have, we have a plan in place to add two-tenths of a mil to the millage rate each year to slowly get up to the amount of money that we need on an annual basis. Again, the, the areas that, that were just mentioned, that where we could save some money or move that money to road resurfacing, those, those dollars should be used to reduce this, this advertised millage rate. We said that we were going to cut. We've started off not cutting. We need, at some point, we have to say no. You know, where it looks like we're gonna get, we should be getting fairly close to ten million dollars this, this upcoming budget, next year, there'll be another two-tenths of a mil. And I will advocate for that. But I do not think that we should try and make that jump. It's too big of a bite this year to move all this, all this money that's, that's, the discussion is coming ahead of us, over to road resurfacing to get to thirteen million this year. So, I'm a no.
Commissioner Bays?
I'm a yes. And I will tell you why. Because before we put one more dollar in anything, we owe it to the citizens to get these roads on a resurfacing. We've kicked this can for years. We're paying this amount of money because we failed to do it over the years. We've never adequately funded it. We made an investment and return, the citizens made an investment to live on those streets. And we have an obligation. This is one of our number-one obligations to take care of and, and I'm going to support it. I think there's ways that either we have to take some money out of reserves. I think we're healthy in reserves and I don't think it's our job to be a savings account for the taxpayers' dollars.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Well, Commissioner Bays, that's exactly what I was going to say. Because the, the money I wanted to save did not get saved. So, the, I still want the millage to be reduced. So, the only way that I would be okay with that is to take that already budgeted money that was to be held back and to put forward this year in reserves. But no more adding, we're, we're cutting at this point.
Commissioner Davis?
We have kicked the can down the road over and over and over again. And the one thing that we hear over and over and over again is pave the roads. And the slide has not been up there yet, but it, it shows the average homeowner what they pay for in, per quarter mil. And by my calculations, moving to take care of roads puts us at a, the average homeowner at about ten bucks a month. And I would hazard a guess that the maintenance on their vehicle is going to save a lot more than ten dollars a month on some of our roads. So, I'm in favor of it. Puts us on a twenty-year cycle, I believe, which is what we need to. And what we're, what, have we been at, seventy or eighty years?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay, thank you, I'm a yes.
Alright.
I'm, I'm sorry. So, we, we had some yeses with conditions. So, how do we see, I don't want just another three million dropped into the budget. So, should we find out how we're paying for this before we move on?
So, the email I sent you regarding some of the millage options, at this point, to get to the three million dollars to do the road resurfacing, we would be taking the savings from the morgue, which, because they've come up with a different way of funding it, we were able to reduce that CIP by one-point-three million. And then the remainder that we had in reserves for the sheriff, for those forty-four positions, so, that's one-point-seven-zero-eight million dollars. That would get us to the three million for road resurfacing.
That was in our, the email.
I understand that, but then we're shifting again, so.
One hundred percent.
We're shi- we're shifting, not kinda, so, I would be okay with you doing that. But then, at the very end of this meeting, I'm gonna be the one to come back and say, well, if we did this and that's what they want, we need to pull some of that saved money back out of what we had budgeted. So, I don't know, where commissioners are gonna fall with that. So, I don't wanna say yes to that. And then everyone's like, oh, it was a yes. And then at the end, no one's going to want to pull any other money back. So, I'm, I'm in a little bit of a quandary. I don't, I don't know how this is, we're taking one thing at a time, but we're not getting the full picture of what it costs the homeowner at the end. It's almost like that should've been first.
Well, it, it's because it depends on what options are chosen.
They're getting consensus, it's, they're gonna have to.
Right, but there's a, there's a proposed and they can see what that is. And I think she gave me a hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar home. It was an increase of seventy dollars a year. A lot of people have assessed value at more than the one-fifty-seven. So, they would be able to do the, the quick math. And, you know, the chamber, because you're talking about businesses too, so. I mean, we're, we're saying yes and no to line items, but, you know, if you might be a yes to one, you still wanna save somewhere else. So, it's like, you see what I'm saying? If you say yes, then everyone else might say no. So, then, I don't wanna be a part of just raising this.
So, that, hold on, that is up to the board. We will fund it or not fund it, however you all tell us to. Right now, when we were looked, when we looked at what millage was available to cut, use, put in reserves, reduce the millage, this is what we found. If there is something else, if there is another project you all want cut, if there, you know, is, there are other things you wanna reduce funding for, we can do that too. We're just coming to you with the millage that we know could be used. Like I said, the morgue, what's left of the sheriff, there's some money that's been rolling in the BOCC reserve year after year. And there will be, after the fourteen fifty, a little bit left of that half a mil that won't be used to give those raises. Other than that, everything in the budget is what we have brought to you. So, we wouldn't necessarily ever suggest cutting a project or a service. You would have to tell us you, you want that done. And then, of course, we can do that. And then, of course, we can do that. So if you want it from somewhere else, you know, you can suggest that.
Like, say I'd be a no for now to the end, but I don't think it matters, so.
So you're, yes or a no, should they just need consensus?
Well, I think that they have it, so I would be a no for now, until we all wash this out at the end, before we.
Okay.
That's something.
Okay. So this slide just gives a bit of information regarding the millage rate overview, and like Commissioner Finnegan was discussing about the average homeowner. So up at the top, we did this two ways. To reduce reserves by a million dollars is equal to point zero seven seven three mils. Or to reduce a tenth of a mil, it's approximately one point three million dollars. And to the gentleman who is looking for the entire mil, that would be, one mil is equal to thirteen million, six hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars. Minus the five percent reserve that we have to put away, it's twelve million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and forty-three dollars. The bottom portion does the estimated savings on a quarter millage rate reduction. That is the rate we had been tasked with looking at and trying to make it to. And then you can see underneath are some of the taxpaying entities, what that quarter of a mil would cost them, and then the average homeowner. And just so you are aware, the average homeowner, the average home price is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's based on assessed value, and that's every property in the county. So obviously, we have properties that are worth millions and millions of dollars, and then we have homes that are worth maybe twenty, thirty thousand dollars. So it is just that it's an average. When we looked at that before, like Commissioner Finnegan had mentioned, this increase would cost them the, the millage we had advertised, about seventy dollars. Not taking into account if they live in a city, or they have a special lighting district or anything like that, but just our millage. So you can see what that would save them, and then obviously, if you have a more expensive property, you would have to multiply that, or, you know, look at your, you know, your trim notice. So, again, any of those things that we had just talked about, when you look at what we had available to reduce it by, and especially with reserves, you would have to use pretty much that savings from the morgue, the savings from using the sheriff's, one point seven, that was for the match of the forty-four. And then the nine hundred and forty-eight thousand and nine hundred and eighty-six thousand that would be left from BOCC, that reserve that rolls, and the half a mil would have to be put in reserves to keep our reserves pretty much close to sixteen percent. So.
So a point two-five millage rate reduction saves the average homeowner twenty-six dollars a year.
Correct.
Large box stores saves, saves them ten thousand, five hundred. The hospital, it saves them twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. And our Duke Energy is saving them four hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. Who are we really saving money for? The big corporates or the, the homeowners, twenty-six dollars? And this is the problem that we, you know, we need to get, we need to get the roads paved. We have six point nine nine mils that we're talking about. And if you all wanna cut, and find a way to cut, then I, then go after the three point zero one that the sheriff has put out there. Because that's half more, almost half, forty-three percent. And I, we need to take care of our employees, and we need to take care of our roads, and we need to make sure the citizens are taken care of. So, that, that's where I would start looking at, then, if you wanna cut the millage.
Madam Chair, I just have a question for Erin. So Erin, if I'm understanding this correctly, my colleagues are, are holding at the fourteen fifty, and then using the the BOCC reserve, that nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, the morgue and the sheriff's grant to increase road resurfacing, or not the reserve?
Not the reserve.
And where's that nine hundred and forty-eight thousand going?
So that nine forty-eight and that nine eighty-six would be, well, depending on where you want the reserve, would be left in reserve. So.
Okay.
If you wanted a lower reserve amount, a lower reserve percentage.
No. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
It's okay. But that's, that's what it would be there.
All right.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Finnegan?
With all due respect, and I thank you, Erin, for the, for the numbers, but when you talk about a savings or not, like it looks like Duke's getting this big savings, and the hospital, but not really. The most important one up there is the average homeowner, because whether, if those taxes go up, the homeowner's still paying for it. Those entities aren't going to take a cut. If, if they have a higher cost to pay, their customers, patients, and more customers are going to pay for it. So at the end, yes, the average homeowner is gonna pay for all of it.
So it's not saying that one taxpayer is more important than the other. We were asked to provide that information, so it's just saying that's what, if we did a quarter of a mil, that's what the homeowner would save.
No, I, I, I understand, but I think for people looking at it and going, oh, well, it's really a big savings to these big people, but if, if it's not a savings, if it's increased, the homeowners still pay for it. They pay for all of it.
Okay.
So, is there any, are we good to, to move on to the next slide?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the tentative budget motion. This is where we had talked about earlier at our one o'clock meeting, you had asked about the figures for the vehicles. So I wanted to give those to you real quick. They're in Exhibit B. The first one is on page eight, and it's number eleven, and it says this adjustment eliminates the growth management director's vehicle from the budget since it was purchased in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So that's where Mr. Howard was saying, one of the vehicles, the growth management vehicle, was already budgeted for. So we needed to adjust that budget for next year.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I am not, I see the slide, it's the first time I've seen the slide, where am I finding Exhibit A, B, and C?
That should be in your backup?
You know I do online, so.
Okay, let me see if I can find. I think it was sent out as additional, hold on one second.
I just always.
Or no, it wasn't additional, hold on.
I see what the public sees.
It's in, it was in your big blue book. Where's your big blue book?
This?
Hold on, it's right before nine oh two, hold on.
Not that one, your, your agenda book. Where's your agenda book?
Oh, I took it back to the.
It, it, well, you left it in your book.
If it came by email, that's easier, I can search for it.
Hold on, I'm scrolling through here real quick.
Do you know where A, B, and C is?
I, I have it, just the pages budget, so.
Is that, how many pages is it?
Budget is, yes, I have it, but then there's, um, five, five.
This one's fifty-four, fifty-four pages?
Fifty, yeah, I guess.
Okay, so what page, then, so I think I have it up, I think I have the.
It's gonna be page fourteen.
Okay. Sorry, y'all, we drowning, this job, we drown in paper.
That's the second one.
Looking at the right thing.
The very first one, the forty thousand dollars, is on page eight. And it's up at the top, number eleven.
Yeah, this is the document I've had up all along, so I just don't see it.
I think you have to.
Exhibit B, got it.
Okay.
So you want, are we talking about A or B right now?
Right now, it's gonna be Exhibit B, it should be page fourteen. And it should be number, I'm sorry, I keep going to the next one. It's page eight, it's number eleven, it's the very first one on page eight.
Got it.
Okay. So that's where we had forty thousand budgeted going into next year to replace the growth management vehicle. It was bought in this fiscal year, so we're reversing that out. The next one is on page fourteen, and it is going to be number one under the Government Vehicle Trust. And that shows the hundred and eight thousand, four hundred dollars. It tells you it's for the two vehicles of growth management and county administration that was purchased this year. And it's coming out of the vehicle trust at a hundred and eight thousand, four hundred dollars for both of the vehicles together.
Great.
So it's reducing carryforward, because obviously, we won't have that cash to carryforward. All right, so C, this one is to accept a motion to approve a resolution amending the twenty-two, or the twenty-three, twenty-four budget for adjustments previously presented at the September seventh, twenty twenty-three tentative budget hearing, Exhibit A, and other modifications, Exhibit B, and cash carryforward estimates for certain accounts, Exhibit Three.
C.
Oh, I'm sorry, Exhibit C.
But I think we need the, the chair.
I'm all, I'm all caught up now on A, B, and C, so we're all good. This is the sheriff's budget, the health department budget, general fund.
So then we just need the motion to approve a resolution.
Okay, so. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to accept the resolution amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget for adjustments.
So moved.
Bays, I need a second.
Second.
Davis? Is there any other board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Finnegan, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote. Aye, okay. Four, that passes four, one. Okay, D?
So D is to accept motion to adopt reimbursement resolution for water and wastewater projects for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And this is page twenty-three, twenty-one. So this was the resolution we had talked about at the last meeting, allowing them to do those connection projects, and then being able to get some type of debt financing and be reimbursed for those projects.
Motion to approve? I have a motion by Commissioner Bays, looking for a second.
Second. That is T one, D.
Yes. Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five, zero. E?
This is a motion to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the final millage rate resolution. There was some information that we have to provide you prior to that. So it is going to be the Citrus County, Florida, is going to be the taxing authority, let me make sure I have this a hundred percent rate.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Cannard?
Before this board votes on an eighteen percent increase, don't we need, didn't, weren't there at least some savings realized in the fourteen fifty an hour? That nine eighty-six, and then from the BOCC reserve, with the nine forty-eight? So isn't there some degree of decrease in millage rate? I mean, I'm still not gonna support it anyway, because we, we've not cut hardly anything.
So, both of those, right now, if we take those and lower the millage rate, and that's totally up to the board, it would also lower the reserve amount. So that's why it was like, this is everything we have, and so what are we gonna do with it?
So we ate it up in salary increases and road resurfacing.
Yes, it, if that is how it's cho, you know, the, or chooses to fund it, it will be used for those two.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
Um, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I just.
Yes, Commissioner Finnegan?
So, Erin, I don't really understand that, so the answer to Commissioner Cannard's question, because when we had spoke, we had the list of how we were going to reduce the millage rate, and it was by all of these things. Now, some of these things got pulled out. So you're saying, that reserve, I thought was a part of the reserves, that was to do this. And then you did have, under the fourteen fifty an hour, I didn't wanna go with that, but since we did, you're saying that would, the nine eighty-six would reduce the reserves, but that was only being held for the employee pay?
Right, so using any of that funding is obviously, at some point, we have to put that into the total of our budget. So then when we calculate reserves, the reserve number we need to make sixteen percent goes up. So we can use that, and we can reduce the millage by that, it's just reserves will probably be lower than the sixteen percent when we add in the additional expenses, so.
I thought we were saving it seventeen percent this year at the max.
Well, originally, however, if we use some of this funding, that was with all, you know, the sheriff, and the sheriff is getting the two point five, we'd be using the one point seven. We're going to use the majority of that half a mil. So a lot of that, that was sitting in reserve, remember, we were talking, like, it's there, but it's not real, because it's going to get used as time goes on. Then there are the adjustments, and those exhibits A, B, and C. So those are some of the other things, and Mr. Howard can talk about some of them if he would like to, including some staff, obviously, the vehicles, and there are some other things in there that have, the only place we have to adjust is out of reserve. So all of those adjustments that we make from the time we bring you the budget to now come out of reserve.
So, and I know, I, I don't, I don't think anyone's gonna agree with me, but I'm, I'm going to throw it out there one more time about the reserves. I know we need reserves, I don't wanna hack up our reserves. but we're saving way more money than we have in the past, and I get the cost of things go up. But for this year, to get what people have asked for and to not hurt them more than our economy has hurt them already, I think that we should take some out of the reserves. Instead of saving their money, I think we're going to still be saving a lot of their money, but we should get this millage rate down with, with some of that money.
Commissioner Finnegan, I actually don't disagree with you. The state recommends from eight to seventeen percent for reserves. Obviously, you don't wanna be at eight, but Commissioner Bays said, it's not our job to hold on to taxpayers' money. So I agree with that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
When I was first elected in two thousand sixteen, the previous board had started working on bringing the reserves back up. And over the past seven years, we've slowly done that to get up to the point to where we are between sixteen and seventeen percent, um, in reserves, as we should be in the event of an emergency. It also, as we've discussed, um, previously, um, that helps to improve our bond rating, which has saved us over the past seven years, has saved us millions and millions of dollars. Uh, that Mr. Oliver was able to go out, uh, to the open market and refinance some of the high interest bonds that we had because we had so much in reserves as well as other things. But we had, we had the, the financial clout to go and do that. If you start taking away reserves, that's, that's one-time funding for recurring expenses. That's really, that, that's bad budgeting, we should not be doing that. If you want to pay for these recurring expenses, you need to raise the millage rate to do so. And then go out and tell the folks who are gonna have to pay those taxes, we had to raise your, your taxes because of X. Pulling it out of reserves, that's, that's one ti, that's one-time money. No, please don't. That's one-time money to pay recurring expenses. That's not how we should be budgeting.
Commissioner Kennard, um, I, I understand your logic. I, I understand what you're saying. I also seem to remember you coming out of the gate, I don't know, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, saying we should be bonding. Were you the one, the commissioner, that said, let's bond and get these roads paved when the interest rate was next to nothing? What's the point of having our reserves so high if we don't bond anything?
We do bond.
What, what's the last thing we bonded?
But not, not at these, not at these current rates.
I know, but you would've been a hero if the board, and you had my support, but you would, you, if you could've gotten that done and gotten that bonded, but you had a board that wanted to get the reserves up, but not get any, our roads weren't getting paved. So I, I understand what you're saying, but if our reserves are so high and we're not getting our roads paved, what's the point of having a great bond rating?
The great bond rating helps you across the board. As you'll find out, when we get to the animal shelter and some of these other major projects, at some point, we're gonna be talk, maybe not this board, maybe a future board is gonna be talking about a new courthouse. New courthouse is sixty, seventy, eighty million dollars. That's where bond rating helps you. That's where, that's where, um, um, sound budgeting, not one year or two years or three years, but a track record of soundly handling the public's checkbook. Uh, keeping your reserves, not spending those monies, um, for these recurring expenses. You gotta control the recurring expenses, 'cause sooner or later, the, the piggy bank is empty.
I understand that.
And then you gotta work for years trying to build those reserves back up and go out and figure out your new courthouse, or these other major capital expenditures.
What's the rating difference between sixteen million in reserve, or, and, or seventeen million in reserves? What's the difference to the?
There's really no way to know that. I mean, they don't, they look at a multitude of things. So there, there's no way to tell. It's, it's not like a chart where you can say you have this much and you get this rating. It just doesn't work.
Commissioner Finnegan.
So speaking the percentage, Erin, could you actually say the dollar amount at the dollar amount that we are budgeted to put into reserves this year?
Once we get consensus, yes. So if that's.
What's the full seventeen percent? Why don't you tell me on this proposed budget?
So, um.
I take all this stuff home and then it just goes in a pile, and I, I wanna look at it, but I never do, and.
Commissioner Finnegan, so are you asking? I think it's on now. Um, so are you asking for the percent that's gonna be in reserve with this budget?
No, not the percentage, the dollars. So last year, it was, I believe, sixteen point three million dollars that was put into reserve, and I thought this year it was twenty-one, twenty-something?
Yeah, so is that the? But is that, is that the one with eliminating all of that in there? No. Okay, so it would be right now as, but is it, what about these two? Okay, so if you leave the nine eighty-six and the nine forty-eight in reserve, it comes out to twenty million, nine seventy-nine, six eighty. From, and that's down from the twenty-six, nine seventy-six, six forty. Or the twenty-seven million that it was on the chart when we presented.
I guess my point would be last year, at sixteen percent, everyone thought it was great that we put sixteen point three million in. This is an extra over four million dollars. So, I mean, I, I don't think if we saved another sixteen point three million dollars, that we would be undercutting our reserves.
I agree. Well, the ex. So the expenses go up, so it's a percent of our expenses. So as the expense goes up, the amount of reserve needs to go up to meet the same.
I understand that.
Yeah, so that's, that's why, because the expenses are going up. So it won't, if we put the same amount in as last year, we're gonna be well under the sixteen percent.
And what is that percentage for the twenty million?
Hold on, we'll have to take some more stuff. Okay, without doing some more math, which we can do if we recess, it's gonna be somewhere between sixteen and seventeen percent, 'cause we have to add the expenses in on the other side.
There you go.
So we're at the top. If, if we saved sixteen point three million dollars instead of twenty point nine, we would still be between sixteen and seventeen percent.
No, that's the twenty million dollar number.
The twenty million dollars is sixteen and seventeen percent.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you asked her what the, if we saved sixteen million, what that would be.
No, I, I, we wanna be at the seventeen, and with the twenty million, you're right there. You're almost there.
Well, we wanna be, according to our policy, between eight and seventeen. Obviously not at eight.
Right.
Historically, we were at twelve and started moving up. Even at fifteen percent was good, so I was curious if we saved where we were last year, sixteen million. I thought that's what you were asking. What's the percentage of sixteen million?
She just said, she said this twenty million, you wanted the number. And, and then I said, what is the percentage of the twenty million, which is sixteen point eight percent?
I wanna know what sixteen million is of that. What's the percentage rate if we saved sixteen million dollars?
That's four million off.
They do math differently than I do, that's why. Yeah, because they have the whole budget and then the general fund budget, and I don't wanna get it wrong.
So if we did the sixteen million dollars, it looks like we would be at thirteen, thirteen point nine percent.
Okay, I was gonna say fifteen. So, so sixteen million is thirteen?
And so again.
Which is a little.
A little low.
Madam Chair.
Um, Commissioner Davis asked first. Are you done, Commissioner Finnegan?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Davis.
Um, to look at this from another perspective, I'd like to, um, ask the county administrator to reiterate what he had said before about how he looks at, it's much like personal budgeting at home, how many days can you run the county?
Yes.
On reserves, and what is best practices from your perspective, and what are you comfortable with as the CEO?
I'd like to have as many as I can get, actually. That's just, that's me, if I can do it, 'cause.
But it's to Commissioner Bays' point, we, we don't.
Right, right.
We don't hang on to taxpayer dollars unless it's fiscally prudent.
Criticize if I'd have thirty, but, um, I'd wanna know how many, that's what, that's the question I was gonna ask Erin next, was how many days do we actually have operating on that? Obviously, if I have at least thirty, I feel good about that. Um, I would want a minimum of thirty days if I could get it.
Uh, so it's about eight point three percent gets you one month. So sixteen percent gets you about two months.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
If I could get forty-five days, I'd be happy. And the other issue is just like this, you know, the storm we had, you know, it, although it was, we had devastation throughout the county, a lot of that you don't get reimbursed, it could be up to two plus years. I think you can attest to that with debris pickup and stuff like that, so you've gotta front that money. Um, so that, those are other issues that you have that you don't think of until you're in that, these storm issues.
So forty-five, to sum it up, forty-five days would be roughly twelve percent in reserves?
Hold on, I'm sorry, I have to log back in.
But then it goes to the mystery that is bond rating, much like any of us who have looked at our credit rating. It's inscrutable, how many different factors go into that, and a lot of them make absolutely no sense. So, you know, that's a mystery. We know eight percent is not gonna be good.
Right.
For bond ratings.
Your economy and things like that, obviously, one dimensional, all those are big factors that they look when they're doing those bond ratings.
So forty-five days would be roughly fifteen million dollars, and again, this is math on the fly, but about fifteen million dollars.
Roughly twelve percent. It, it, that actually makes sense. If, if eight percent, if the guideline is between eight and seventeen percent, and if that rough figure is eight percent equals thirty days, then that's why they would have that, is the lowest guideline is that you better have at least thirty days in reserves.
That's a starting point.
So. This is all just, um, smell test kind of math, it's not
Yes.
precise math. I'm done.
Okay. Do you need to do a recess for your numbers? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bays said something.
I think it would be very prudent for us to start making five-year projections and assumptions. I think to sit here and do this on an annualized basis and kinda guess what, what's gonna happen, we should be looking at assessed values, other sources of revenue, the, um, expense assumptions, you know, the financial projections. I, I just, I think we're making a fool's game out of this to try to do an annualized budget on four hundred million dollars for the taxpayers. They deserve better. There's no Fortune five hundred company that would operate like this. We would be looking at an economic forecast of where we're at today and where we're going. And I, I mean, I'm very disappointed that we're, we're so focused, so myopically on one year, when we should be looking five years out and making some projections. We know that what we have today, we know that next year, we have a lot of retail coming on, um, big box stores, some development that's coming in. But we also know, on the same hand, that we have a lot of expenses that are coming ahead of, with that. So it's not, I mean, when we hear people say, oh, you're getting all of this, it's not a net-net number. I mean, we're gonna have to have capacity for roads. There's gonna be right-of-way that's going to be needed. We're gonna need more public safety. There's a, just a lot that comes with that. And I, and I just, I hope that come November one, everybody take a deep breath. But I hope November one, we really dig in, and we know what we're talking about year over year over year, and, and start to have some bigger conversation about where we're going.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard, and then Commissioner Davis.
Well, I know I've already said it, and I'll, yeah, I will delay to the point a bit. If we rob the piggy bank this year, you get to do that one year. Next year is when we feel the pain, because now we have to double down to catch up to the spending that we're doing. Uh, or you have to have tremendous cut in expenses next year. Um, this is not a good way to be spending the public's money. Um, I'm not gonna support it, and I'm sorry to say that. This is, this is the very first year since two thousand sixteen, when I was elected, that I'm gonna, that I'm not gonna support the budget. It is, uh, this is the wrong way to go about it. We promised the public that we were going to go in this and cut the budget. We didn't tell them we're gonna keep the budget the same, we're just gonna rob reserves to pay it. And so, uh, I hate to see it, but obviously, I'm outvoted on this one, so you know, we'll go to reserves and come back with the final numbers. But I'm telling you, diving into reserves, um, to give the illusion that we're saving the public money, um, is not a good way to do it.
Commissioner Davis?
Um, I didn't come out in favor of cutting reserves, I was just participating in the discussion. I just wanted to say to Commissioner Bays, brilliant. I absolutely, one hundred percent agree. Long ball thinking and to the point that, um, the, uh, our guest in the audience spoke to, giving people some idea of what, where this county is going, how much does it cost to live here? We are one of the least expensive places to live in Citrus County, and it shows in our roads. And we lose money on residents. The county pays more to service residents than we get in residential taxes. What, where we balance the budget is on the backs of businesses and on farms. And so me being a farm girl, we have to protect our ag lands, um, but we also have to do that from a financial perspective. And if we look like a thriving county with paved roads and a lot going on here, and that we take care of business, we're going to get more career-class jobs moving here with big, not just big-box retail, we'll get some really cool jobs here with some great companies, and that is going to reduce the residential burden. And we also, um, I cannot wait for neighbors in Giblin to come out with alternate funding sources, because our ad valorem should be a whole lot less than it is. But we need other funding sources, and that takes time. We have that coming out this fall, and I, I sincerely hope that we have some of those in place in the next year or two to be able to drop ad valorem quite, quite hugely. So. Well done.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Thank you. To Commissioner Kennard's point, I agree. That's not, this isn't the best way to do things, but we had a list of ways to cut the budget, and we're not doing it. So I cannot, I did not support the millage rate in the preliminary budget, so I wouldn't support it obviously at this final budget. So somehow, we have to lower the millage rate, and I don't, I don't know if there was even consensus on, on saving a, a lower percentage of reserves or not. I'm not sure where we are with it, but I know that the proposed millage rate is, doesn't work for me.
It's, we're talking about this general fund, six point nine nine. I've said it before, if you wanna cut this. I've said it before, if you want to cut this, which I don't think is a good idea, that I think that we have to bite the bullet. Yes, does it look great politically to say, I'm gonna roll back, and I'm gonna do that, but we have to get stuff done. And if that, if you want to cut something, why, why are we not looking then at the three point seven four oh of the sheriff's budget? I said, if, if this goes on and public safety is important, then leave the sheriff's budget the way it is. If streets are important, then let's get the millage so that we can pave the roads. If our employees are important, let's pay them properly. So, that to me is we can't, we can't roll back, we have to. If public safety and roads and employees are important, every other constitutional officer is fighting for their employees, and I'm gonna fight for our employees. And if roads are important, which everybody says they are, and if public safety is important, then we have no choice but to do this. Absolutely no choice, and I'm sorry you're not gonna vote for it, but I feel like we have to move forward as a county and do what's right for the county, and we have to get some stuff done. Commissioner Canard.
You do have a choice. We had a plan in place for getting all the employees, uh, at a minimum up to fifteen dollars, getting up to that minimum fifteen dollar an hour wage. Um, but, we're stepping over a couple of years and jumping ahead of that, that's what's costing us. We had a plan to get the roads to where they need to be, um, on a twenty-year cycle, but we're jumping ahead of that, that's what's costing us. Um, those are, those are things we do have a choice in the matter of, and we're just not, you know, we're, we're changing the plan midstream, and to do so is expensive, I'm not gonna support it. And, you know, uh, again, I'm gonna sit here and just belabor the point, but, um, obviously, the votes are there to do this. Um, I'm, uh, I'm out, so, if it's time to recess and calculate the, uh, the final millage rate, y'all can support it.
Commissioner Bayes?
So the constitutional officers that are our responsibility kind of held their budget at three percent? For the most part?
Um, some of them did, not all of them.
Well, I understand, the sheriff was the one that kind of went more than, I mean, do we have others?
Um, there were some that were slightly higher, but those are due, like the supervisor election, it's a presidential year, there were things happening.
Sheriff. Can you give a little bit this year? You got forty-three point nine five percent of the general fund, can you help some sisters out? Especially the bald one.
And, and half the number of employees that we have, too.
We know it's important, but
You know we backed the green.
We've been kicking the can, and we know that last year with, with the gov, with the governor and the fifty thousand dollar minimum salary, that all took place, and so I think a lot of your folks got a, a, a nice increase last year. I was a little bit confused about things that you sent out on March one and then June one, your salary went from fifty-five thousand, fifty to sixty thousand something. I know things are expensive, but can, can you help us out this one year?
I've already done so, and what I would like to point out to you again and remind you is we're the thirty-third largest county in the state of Florida. We fund public safety at number fifty-nine. Number fifty-nine. The state of Florida raised the starting minimum wage for law enforcement officer on July first to fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. When you say sixty thousand, what you're really referring to is what we budgeted, which is to include the potential for overtime. And overtime is something short-term, not gonna hurt your employees, but long-term, it's highly detrimental. Workplace injuries from repetitive motions, workplace accidents that cause injury, increased blood pressure, stroke, heart disease, all contributing factors to why we're losing so many people in the public sector, especially in law enforcement. We expect our deputies to execute their mission, and we expect our communications officers to execute their missions with precision that is greater than that of a skilled surgeon, with a zero defects mentality every time they go out there on a call. Last year, I notified the board that we were grossly understaffed based on our population in this county. And since I've took over this agency, our population has grown by not just a few thousand, but by over twenty-five thousand souls that now live here, work here, and play here every single day. In a very short period of time. We're on a glide slope to get to a hundred and eighty thousand, well before the end of this decade. We're paying our deputies a very modest salary that's highly competitive right now, and if we lose the edge that we gained last year, it puts us back to where we were before the global pandemic started. We said last year we needed twenty-two deputies. We identified that number, and we were told, because people didn't truly understand what vacancy float does, but some of those that you're in business do understand what vacancy float does. You're using time and a half dollars to put somebody into the breach to go out and accomplish the mission. Time and a half dollars are far more expensive than straight time dollars to go out and support the mission. And we identified those twenty-two. We submitted a budget amendment on March first, and that's what you're referring to in those dollars. On March first, we submitted that. That budget amendment did not come in with the full twenty-two, and as you all know, the very last, uh, few days of the month of July, cough, cough backwards, I don't want her to get sick, and I don't want him to get sick.
Sorry, just turns on.
So, we got, we got down to where we're less than two months, or barely two months left in the fiscal year, we only got ten of the twenty-two. In our budget proposal last year, we notified the B O C C that last year's budget submission, starting on one October of two thousand and twenty-two, should get us the twenty-two. We needed fifteen more this year. Unanimously, this board on May eleventh approved the entire forty-four positions that we applied for in the cops grant. So the compromise is that we're still way behind, knowing that a looming federal continuing, uh, resolution authority is just over the horizon right now up in Congress. We're probably not gonna see any action on that federal grant until sometime in the spring. It being an election year, us being a very strong Republican state, two of the most notorious residents of this state are running against the incumbent in Washington DC. I will tell you that I guarantee you that we're not gonna see forty-four of those positions filled. It, we're not large enough, and the federal government right now with the administration of Washington DC is not gonna pay one bit of attention to what a Republican sheriff and a Republican majority county and a Republican majority state is asking for, for grant money. The ones that will get it will probably be Miami Dade, Orange County, and some of those other heavily, uh, contested areas that's gonna get the money there. So we have compromised quite extensively in this budget to get us to where we are so that we can do modest pay raises to maintain par with what we've got right now, but also make sure that we're hedging against the inflationary factors that are out there. And every time you turn on the TV at night, every family is enduring about a seven hundred dollar monthly tax increase or budgetary impact on all the things that have come out of Build Back Better by Joe Biden. Biden has not built a single thing, and nothing is better under his leadership. And what we've done right now is a bare-bones budget that we talked to all five of you about and laid it out on the line. We either cut positions, which is the stark reality, or we pay our people the living wage under the very modest, modest budget proposal that we've got there. And I think it's enormously, uh, short-sighted if we don't fund this budget the way it was submitted and the way we agreed to in meetings with the county administrator and all of the commissioners since the very first time the number was thrown up there. And yes, homeland security that begins and ends in Citrus County is not cheap. You want it cheap, well, you're not gonna have the quality of people that we have out there, and then we end up paying more in lawsuits and accidents and injuries on the job for our deputies, and we just can't afford to do that.
Thank you for making the case for our employees.
No, absolutely, absolutely. When you look at all these businesses that are out there, you drive by that car wash every day, Commissioner Schleball, and you go to, to work, and I know you see it. Their starting salary is gonna be much greater than what the county's paying. And we know that all these big-box stores that are coming in here and adding more, uh, capacity, uh, to the community, they're gonna pay their people a hell of a lot more than what we're paying. We've lost guys to go be truck drivers for Walmart for a hundred and ten grand a year their first year. We've lost guys to go and leave the law enforcement profession because there are lineman jobs out there that are double what they're making right now. And the reality is, is the private sector's always gonna pay better, but the intangibles that are out there that we worked very hard to give our employees, which is a benefit ultimately to the citizens because we keep them here, is that we don't lose the talent that we've trained and we've invested tens of thousands, and in some cases, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and to have them come here and be in the line when the nine-one-one call comes in, so that we can dispatch that deputy sheriff to respond to save somebody's life.
Sheriff, thank you. I said this to you when I met with you. We got six point nine nine that we're working with for the general fund, to cover you, three other, three other, um, constitutionals and the B O C C. And I said, if, if we can keep the millage at the six point nine nine, I'm not gonna go after your budget. Because public safety is important. But I'm not willing to sacrifice our employees again, and our roads, and the things that we have to get done, that leaves us three point nine four to work, three point nine three to work with, with three constitutionals and the county. So, that, do, would I love to, to lower the millage, yes. But if public safety is as important as everybody says it is, and we budgeted ten, gave you money for ten employees, you were able to hire six, hopefully you'll be able to fill that up, get, then come in back to get the rest that you need. But in order to do that, we have to have the millage up in order to support you, the roads, the county, the supervisor of election, the clerk of court. And, um, that, I sit here and hear, yes, I would like to cut the millage, I would love to cut the millage, but I don't know how we're gonna do it. So, as long as they don't cut the millage, I'm gonna support your budget. But if they start going after the three point nine three, I'm going after your three point seven four oh.
And as I explained to all of you, the, the, the manner of the presentation of the data that occurred back in June was a gross re- gross misrepresentation of what the actual facts were whenever you look at the total budget analysis. And the, the way the letter that came out, um, telling us about the budget this year had absolutely no discussion whatsoever about the inflationary factors out there. And F R S rates alone, along with workers' comp and our healthcare costs, have eaten that three percent alive, and there's no money left in the pot to give a single person a pay raise this year, not a single person.
Same on the county side.
Exactly, exactly. We have to take care of our employees, otherwise we can't serve the citizens we got. And as Commissioner Davis mentioned, if we look like a community in decline, people are not gonna move here. Businesses are not gonna move here, because they won't thrive here. And then you have the hollowed-out, uh, areas around our community that just get exacerbated and, and far more uh, worse-looking in the future from some of those areas that are o- oasises of just complete nothingness right now, because those retail establishments abandoned those, uh, shopping centers and those other businesses, and we can't afford that. Our, our community deserves better, and we've got to make the tough decisions to support the community, and it does begin and end with public safety. As we all said back when we had our, our meeting over at the county government building in La Canto about six months ago, and we're getting ready in a, in a matter of a few days to have another one.
Did I re-invite you, because I thought I took you off the list?
I'm there, according to, according to the calendar invite I got from your staff, I was, I was invited, thank you.
I'm teasing.
But, no, we, we have to get after this, because if we don't, again, we can't deliver those essential services, and then few, folks right now, every, every day in Florida, we know there's about a thousand people moving to the state. Well, about ten people or so every month are moving to Citrus County. I'll take all of that and then some, and run with it to the bank. But the minute that we don't look like a good, safe place to raise a family, they're gonna go to another county.
Um, Commissioner, could you say what another colleague in another county always says about us? Which goes to your point, sir. Don't say names.
Now, there's a, um, another commissioner to the south of us that, um, serves on a, a board, and I get so mad because she's a real estate agent, and she says almost every single meeting we set in, she goes, I bring customers and sell them houses up here all the time because you guys are so cheap.
And that's what we're attracting, and we need to pay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Anything?
Just, just wanna, I guess, as another commissioner said, belabor the point. When you say where we're cutting, when we offered the thirteen, that was the plan, and we are taking care of our current employees, we are. It's just new, new people that would start would not get that extra dollar fifty an hour. We would be taking care of all of our employees. And Sheriff, I, I'm glad you brought that up, and that's why I wasn't going for your budget, because all the community leaders got together, and we agreed, the number one priority was public safety. So we're supposed to be making decisions based on what the people want and what the community has decided, and that was one. Um, and that's why we were, we were trying to keep that in there and, and giving the sheriff more deputies, but we had to plan a cut, and we're, we're not cutting.
I don't, I'm, are you done? I'm not going to belabor this, but paying our employees twenty-seven thousand dollars a year is not taking care of our employees, I'm sorry, that is not. And we're losing them constantly, and it takes two point five people to replace who we have trained and expect them to live on twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. We're not taking care of our employees that way, I'm sorry, I will never agree with you about that.
I, I forgot to mention one thing, if you, if you will. Of comparing the car wash, even if they are paying more, that's a part-time job. I mean, a job with the county is full-time, benefits, great health insurance, health insurance that didn't go up for the spouses, I mean, we have other benefits, and an opportunity to move up in a position. Um, if you get a job at the car wash, you might make a co- a dollar or two more an hour, or whatever it is, but it's part-time, you're not getting the benefits, and there's nowhere to go, you're, you're not moving up, you just, you have a job and not a career, and I, I hope in our county, we have a, you know, we're fostering a good environment, and we have a career that we do care, and we have a plan to keep moving people up.
Commissioner Davis?
Um, several things stood out in, um, what the sheriff said. Number one, enormously short-sighted, he used that about the sheriff's department, if we don't fund his budget. It's also enormously short-sighted if we do not hit roads and pay, from our perspective. And then public safety being the third leg to that stool. Um, and I do dis, you know, the other thing was cost of turnover. And you touched on that as well, Chair, cost of turnover is enormous. And if we are underpaying at the lowest end, we are going to have turnover. But my biggest concern is indeed the big-box stores paying fifteen dollars an hour, because every financial journal I read talks about big-box stores not playing so many games with a whole bunch of part-timers to avoid paying benefits, because they can't do that anymore. They are paying full-time wages with benefits, and that's what we're competing against. And so, yeah, you know, we, we're taking care of our current employees, but we have to have a base wage to actually get new employees at the bottom end, and it hurts. I mean, I got my trim notice too, guys. You know, this, but it doesn't hurt that much compared to the path that it sets us on. Um, certainly less road repair, uh, vehicle repairs for our roads. Um, the amount of email I get about, I'm gonna come after the county for the alignment and tire issues I have from going down my road. Um, and these are sometimes some pretty major roads that people are complaining about, so, um, to paraphrase the Chair, you know, we gotta rip this Band-Aid off and, um, really get our act together as a county, and look to re, um, rework our tax structure in the next couple of years as we can, after we hear from neighbors in Giblin. Thank you, Chair.
Very good. Okay. Erin?
I just wanted to make you all aware that we did receive the draft report from neighbors Giblin today regarding the alternative revenue sources, so, we'll be looking at that and seeing when, the soonest that they can. So we'll be looking at that and seeing when, the soonest that they can come to review that with you all. For the final millage rate, um, there is one question I need to ask before we go forward, which is fire rescue M S T U needs four votes. So if there will not be four votes, we need to go recalculate their millage. So just for the fire millage, will there be consensus for four votes or do we need to go adjust their millage?
I would not be adjusting the fire rescue M S T U. I would not be voting to adjust it. Can I say leave it the same? Commissioner Kennard?
I concur.
Commissioner Finnegan?
It's fine. I heard you say.
Leave the same.
Okay. So now, is there anything, any of the other millages really we're talking about, general fund, that is going to be adjusted or is it going to stay at the six point nine nine five one?
I, I'm voting for the six point nine nine five one. I mean, I, I don't, I would love not to, but I have to.
Okay.
Concur.
Okay.
Concur.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read what we legally have to, and then I'm going to do fire M S T U separately so that we can have those votes on its own. We do need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion. Looking for a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Schleybaugh, second by Commissioner Baze.
Okay. So the aggregate rolled back rate is seven point five three four nine mils and the proposed aggregate millage rate is eight point eight seven five five mils. Therefore, the percentage millage increase is seventeen point seven nine. Countywide, the general fund, oh, I'm sorry, let me do fire first. Fire rescue M S T U, point five seven eight zero mils.
Do you need a motion and a second to vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to.
We've got a motion and a second already. Don't we have to act on that first?
Yes.
So do you want to do everything else besides fire first?
Yes.
Okay. So countywide, it's going to be general fund six point nine nine five one, transportation point nine eight six zero, health department point zero five six four. So the countywide total millage would be eight point zero three seven five. Then the special districts, library service is going to be point three one four seven. The fire rescue taxing is at zero. Um, and the stormwater M S T U is at zero. So the special taxing districts would be at point three one four seven. And one second without fire. It will be eight point three five two two.
Chair?
Yes.
Can I request clarification of that motion? Because the way the motion is worded for the item which was presented is to adopt, to execute the final millage rate resolution, correct?
Right. But one needs four votes.
Except for the fire. My mo- my motion was to adopt the... Okay, where am I? Excuse me.
Would you like to amend your motion to say excluding?
Yes, except for the fire.
Okay. And Baze?
Yes, I'll amend.
This is T one E, is it not?
It's accept the motion to adopt the final millage except for the fire and approve the millage resolution authorizing the chairman to sign, which would be eight point three five two two, correct?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. Is there for any further board comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So that passes three two. The next motion would be for the fire.
Yes.
We're look, I'm looking for a motion to approve the fire rescue M S T U at point five seven eight zero.
So moved?
Second.
And a motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any further board comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. That passes five zero. F.
F is the motion to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the final budget resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve T one F.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any further board comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
That passes three two.
Okay.
G.
Is going to be the motion to approve and authorize staff to execute the following trim compliance forms for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four via electronic format, which is called E-trim. It's the vote record for final adoption of millage levy, D R four eighty-seven, the maximum millage final disclosure, D R four twenty M M, and the certification of compliance, D R four eighty-seven.
Looking for a motion for G.
Motion to approve T one G.
Second.
Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any further board comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
That passes four one. H.
This is a motion to authorize staff to execute the certification of final taxable value, D R four twenty-two for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four via electronic format, E-trim.
Motion to approve, um, item T one H.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Days, Ba- Days, Davis. Second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any further board comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. That passes five zero. I.
This is a motion to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the roll-forward grant resolution for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Looking for a motion on T one I.
Motion to approve T one I.
Commissioner Davis, looking for a second?
Second.
Commissioner Baze, is there any further board comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. J. Accept the motion to authorize the chairman to sign a letter to the sheriff regarding the sheriff's budget allocation for fiscal year twenty-four as approved by the county administrator and the county attorney.
Motion to approve item T one J.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Baze, um, Davis, second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any further board comment? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Okay. Is that it for T one? That was painful, but very good. Okay. T two?
T two is much easier. Um, sorry, Joanna Cattielan Development because you've done all the heavy lifting. Um, T two is updating the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan. It's required by statutes. So it reflects the C I P that you just adopted. It's not, not everything is in there. These are items that either maintain or help to improve the level of service. You'll also see stuff in here such as the resurfacing program because this helps, uh, staff get grants by having it in the comprehensive plan. So staff is recommending approval. Um, the state allows us to do this by ordinance because this is an annual requirement.
Okay. I can't find my T two, but.
Motion to approve.
Motion. Okay.
Need to do the public hearing.
And this is just housekeeping. The state needs the, uh, the, uh, C I P projects.
Right. There is a preamble and the absence of the county attorney. It, it's on the ordinance, um, page eight ninety-eight of the packet.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Baze. I'm looking for a second.
Sorry, go.
By Commissioner Kennard.
It's a public hearing. Do we not have to open it to the public?
It, it is, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I'm really jumped the, okay.
You're trying. There's not much to say. They just, you just adopted this.
Is there any, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about T two, our capital improvement elements of the comprehensive plan?
I'm Mark Zavaski. I live on, uh, North Wagon Point, uh, in, in Pine Ridge, again, representing eleven thousand residents of, uh, of Pine Ridge. Just a point of clarification from the previous dialogue that occurred on page nine oh two, uh, that eight million dollars on that first line for the annual budget resurfacing, uh, the annual road resurfacing program. You said that number was going to be adjusted to somewhere around nine point five million dollars. Is that my understa- and, and I don't know if you can answer me directly, but if, if so, then that number needs to be adjusted in this before it is approved. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this? Mr. Howard, do you have an answer to his question?
Um, I'll, I'll ask Aaron that.
Joanne, is that one of the ones that is getting reported?
It is, and we will reflect that in the, uh, when we have this last-minute changes, we always have to change in the ordinance. But that's a good point. We will get with Aaron's staff and make sure that that's on the final ordinance for signature.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Okay, so there's nobody further speaking, so I do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Baze and Commissioner Kennard. Are you still good with that? Okay, is there any further board comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Is that it? Then it is seven oh three and we are adjourned.